December 12th, Port Edward Public Schools Board of Education meeting to order roll call.
I always forget, it's my job, isn't it?
Ben Martinson here.
Terry Hildebrandt, I appear.
John Daven, here.
Leo Tomsgard, here.
Kathy Moplin, they're still recovering.
Item number two, report from student representatives and student staff recognition. Call, skip right over number one, consider approval of agenda.
No move.
Second it. A motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, motion carried. Now number two, report from student representatives and student staff recognition.
Tonight we have, our student council representatives are here. I'll let them do their usual introductions and talk about what's going on. And then I do have one staff recognition afterwards.
Okay, I'm Addison Gibbs, I am a senior. I'm involved in three sports, football, basketball, and baseball. Drama club, student council, law enforcement. Anyway, I work at San Bellego over the summers, caddying. And then my future plans are to most likely go to UW Madison for pre-med.
My name is Colin Cronin, I'm a freshman. I do football, track, drama club, student council, law enforcement. I don't have really any jobs outside of school. And my future plans, all I've really figured out is I want to be a sports writer.
And so the school happenings are, on this past week, the middle school student council put on a senior citizen practice, which was, they allowed for senior citizens to come in and they served them. I believe the band played as well.
And there was also a holiday meal last week, like provided by the eco club. And Mr. Bruno helped set it up and some board members were invited.
Subject of the month is a program put on by the student council, high school student council. And what it is, is we sign up as student council members and we come over to Mountford School and get to teach the kids a lesson or play five with them. I had October and so I got to play in a game of five with them. We were just spending time with the kids. And the one for this month is math. And so the high school students will be coming over and teaching a lesson or playing their math game.
And tomorrow, there is a high school band choir concert that is put on by Ms. Stelcheck and Ms. Pulvermacher.
And then sports teams. On Friday, last Friday, both the boys and the girls had a win against Walros. The girls are three and three and two and oh in the conference. And the boys are four and two and one and oh in the conference. On Friday, they play, both the girls and the guys play a raffle.
Girls are at raffle, boys are home.
Yeah.
Any questions? Any questions, Hoyer? No, if you guys keep up the good work.
Just one student recognition and then a staff recognition. The student recognition, Addison Gibbs was recognized as Wisconsin's high school heisman. This fall sponsored by Wendy's. It's a great honor, so some congratulations to Addison. And then, I'm gonna put this under staff recognition and it's a little unique because it's actually about a former staff member. This evening, one of the thank you cards that you signed is for Ed Hoyer, former elementary principal. Ed is stepping down from his longtime role as president of Port Edward's Education Foundation. He's gonna stay on the board, but Ed is stepping down from that role this year. And so, thought it appropriate with his deep involvement in the foundation, his time as a staff member here at the school, that, you know, some thanks for all of the just wonderful service he's provided in that role as president. So. Corey Searls is stepping into the role, moving forward as education foundation president.
Well, thank you very much, you're free to go if you'd like.
Thank you.
All right, next item, President's Report. All members are here except Kathy, we mentioned she's recuperating. Next board meeting will be January 9th, 2019.
2019.
Moving on to administrative report. Kyle, report on state report cards.
Yes, so at your place, I put copies of the state report cards and I do have them out on the public side too. And so in the packet that you see, the first report card is our overall district report card. And so the report cards really look at four areas to ascertain the score. Our score at the district level, seventy-seven point seven, sitting in the exceeds expectations area. Really a very good score for our district. And, you know, a couple of the things that I, oh, I'm sorry, it was seventy-seven point two. So, I'm looking at last year's report card there. But again, a very good, good score. So what goes into the student achievement? This is looking at English Language Arts Achievement and Mathematics Achievement. And it's looking at the state testing results that come to us either from the board exams or from the ACT. And it actually takes a look back three years. And it looks at, to derive that score, they look at our previous three years and come up with these scores. And as you see, you can see what the average state score is, you can see what our district score. And there's a lot of statistics and mathematical calculations that go into deriving how you get to a state score of seventy-one point six. District growth, this is, what this looks at is, this looks at the potential for student growth over time in testing and in these assessments. How, are our students growing? Are they, are they getting better in English and in math? And again, we have very impressive scores at the district level there. Closing gaps, there's really truly only one area. And so what this looks at, this looks at subgroups in our population, economically disadvantaged, students receiving special education services, this might look at minority students. Really for our district, you have to have a certain amount of students in those subpopulations to garner a score in this. For us, only area that we garner any kind of closing gap score is economically disadvantaged. And again, the score, this is solids, again, a solid score. And what that tells us is, we're closing the gaps in that achievement between students who are economically disadvantaged and students who are not economically disadvantaged. And the last one is the on-track post-secondary readiness. You look at the graduation rate, the attendance rate, achievement then as well in third grade English and eighth grade math. So it was very specific. And again, solid scores there. These scores are then weighted. One thing I want to caution the board when you look at these, these are not apples-to-apples comparisons between districts. Weighting can be different depending on populations and those things from district to district. So our report card score, even though student achievement, district growth, closing gaps, and on-track post-secondary readiness is what our neighboring districts and all districts are scoring on, how it's weighted can change from district to district. And so, it just that apples-to-apples doesn't always work. I'll give you an example, in this packet I included our elementary score, our middle school score, and our, our high school score. These scores were released in the newspaper a few weeks ago. And you might have seen that our middle school and elementary school were really some of the top in the area. The middle school, I think, had the top score in the area. Again, some middle schools, if you page over to our middle school score, our middle school score has all four of these areas that it's getting a score in. Other middle schools, you know, if it's a smaller school, may not have all four areas. You page over one to our high school, we only get scored in two areas. Student achievement and on-track post-secondary readiness. What's interesting about the high school student achievement score, it's only looking at two previous years of student achievement because the third previous year, we didn't get a score because our student class size in that group, that was our graduating class of like thirteen or fourteen. So you have to have twenty students in an area to even ding it. So, you know, there's, there's just not, there's not an easy way to go apples-to-apples. If you look at our student achievement score and that on-track post-secondary readiness, solid scores, but then go down and look at the percentage weights. Eighty percent of our score of this, what, our score is seventy point six, we meet expectations, but eighty percent of that is made up of student achievement. There may be a neighboring district that's also got a closing gap score. So that might cause forty-five percent of their student achievement score to be weighted that way. And forty-five, you know, so it just really is not always an apples-to-apples comparison. One thing I can say is, at least in our high school score, there was certainly some solid improvement from the year before. A lot of improvement there. These scores can fluctuate year to year just on some small numbers, again, sometimes it's anomalies. One of the things that, when the DPI comes out with this, they talk to us about smaller schools tend to have a lot more of this in these scores. Because when you're talking a class of thirty-five students, two or three students scoring one way or another on a test, or a graduation rate that for whatever reason just didn't fall, you don't have so many students to spread that difference over. So, you know, you can have a lot of wild fluctuation in these scores from year to year. We've seen that in our ACT scores. Two years ago, our ACT scores, our average composite was just under twenty. This year, our average composite was over twenty-one. So in one year's time, you know, we had this wild fluctuation in that score. But again, that's more on a small district. You look at a district the size of Wisconsin Rapids, their scores are gonna tend to play out fairly even over time. You know, the one thing you want to do though, is you want to look at these. And one thing we have done is, we've looked at these, we've looked at, for instance, our elementary reading scores and things. We've made some changes in curriculum there. Last year, you know, the purchase of some new curriculum at the lower elementary grades. In the high school, we really, as the enrollments got up and we've looked at some of the achievement, boy, we need to deal with some at-risk population. And so, we've done, you know, we do look at these and try to glean some lessons out of these report cards. It's, next year, they're gonna include what we do at the ninth and tenth grade testing with the Aspire as part of our growth. So in the high school, where right now, we don't have a growth score in the high school because the only, only test mechanism in the high school is been the ACT. Moving forward, they'll start incorporating the ninth and tenth grade Aspire tests, which are ACT-based tests. So, you know, some of this changes over time, not always apples-to-apples. Overall, you know, I do, I do take quite a bit of time and try to look at how we're doing, areas we can improve on. And I think, I think this speaks well for our district, these are, again, very solid scores. If you ask me to get into the statistics behind them all, I'm gonna have to get somebody from DPI up here to really get into it.
Any questions, Kyle? After these results came out, did you get any kind of public comment?
Uh, no. You know, we, I mean, it'd be, you know, our scores are very good, very good in the area. I, you know, we had a very favorable newspaper article. But I also, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, those are our scores and we want to make sure that we're looking at them and being, you know, what can we do to improve? I haven't had a lot of public comment on those. We did, we did put up on our website a directory on the homepage. There is a state law that actually requires that we have a link. And we do have one buried a little further in our website. But we, when those came out, we obviously wanted to make sure the public was, had easy access to those. So we did that. We do publish as well, we have to in January, publish a notice on our, what's called our educational options. As, and in that educational options notice, we also have to give notice of what our school scores are. And so, we have done that each year and continue to do that. So, you know, but in terms of just direct feedback, I haven't got a lot, so.
Next item on our administrative reports, report on holiday activities at the elementary school. Karen.
And recently, with the holiday season upon us, we had our Christmas concert last week, our elementary Christmas concert. Once again, it was a huge success. Wall-to-wall people, standing room only as usual. Mrs. Pulvermacher does an amazing job getting all the kids up on the stage, get their songs, get their songs done, getting them off the stage, you know, just running a very smooth program. And, you know, a special thank you to our staff, our teachers, and some of our aides that, that come to help out. Every single teacher was present, helps make sure the kids are where they need to be, when they need to be there, and participates. So it was another successful elementary concert. In addition, we did our yearly mitten and hat tree. If you would have walked into our lobby a week ago, you would have seen hats and mittens all over the Christmas tree out there that kids bring in and donate. And then the family center just picked them up today or yesterday that we donate as part of one of our things that we do as a yearly tradition for school. We have a festive sweater day coming up next week. We're calling it festive sweater, not ugly sweater. So, the fest, the more festive, the better. So we'll see what creative things kids come up with for that. And then the last day before break, we are going to have, third and fourth grader going bowling. They've done that for the past couple of years. And it's been great, though, I, Bollmore does a wonderful job accommodating for the kids. And then, the movie, we are doing Kate Two. We were originally going to go to a movie, they were going to go see The Grinch, but The Grinch isn't in the theaters anymore, which I have no idea why they would take that out by like Thanksgiving. But they did. So we're, we're going to just have a movie day in here, I think. We'll just do it in the library and, and show a movie for the kids and do something fun and festive the day before, the day before winter break. So, I think that's about it. It's just, you know, the next week, the last week before break is always a, always an exciting one, for sure. Also, I feel like there's one more thing that I forgot to write down. I'm not sure. If I remember, I'll let you know later. But, Max, is there anything else up there? Come on, help me out here. I have my list, I feel like I forgot something holiday related that we did. But that's gonna, that about covers it, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Hoyer? All right, moving on. Next item is questions, comments from people in attendance. I don't believe anyone signed up to speak.
Oh yeah, if you want to join the ice skating team, you can get some ice skates and come down to Ripple. We got a staff ice skating team.
Then we'll move on to consent agenda. Seek a motion for approval of the minutes of the past meeting, November fourteenth, twenty eighteen. So move.
Second.
A motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carried. Next item, consider approval of financial reports and a report on the gifts, please.
Yes, I have a food report today. We have received a donation of two-hundred-and-twenty dollars from Tim and Deborah Wallner. And this is for our music program in memory of Kim Hanson, who was a former steward. In fact, she was in my class, so that was very thoughtful of them. We also, Mrs. Bruink asked if I would report that for several years, the Knights of Columbus have donated winter coats, snow pants, caps, and mittens. And she works with Dave Thiel. And so we're thanking them for their donation of those again. And the elementary school received another bag of homemade knit hats from Valerie Curler.
I can just make an additional comment on gifts. We're informed this morning at our Port Education, Port Edward's Education Foundation meeting, that the Alexander Foundation will be making a gift to the education foundation that will come back to the school for renovation of sound in our Dorky and Alexander Art Forum. We'll cover the whole cost, but we'll get us started and it's a fairly significant gift to get that started. We will probably cover that in a little more detail in January. But it was a, just a very pleasant surprise and a very much appreciated. Really was, will help us get to that last stage and getting that space really back up to really solid performance space.
With that, seek a motion to approve financial report.
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carried. Moving on to unfinished business, number eight, second reading of policies as previously presented.
Any questions from previous presentation of policy that you had?
I trust nothing has occurred in the last month beyond what we looked at in November.
Yep.
Should be spot on. Make ourselves current. Do you want a motion?
Yeah.
Move with the option of the policy updates as printed in the minutes, or printed in the agenda.
Second. I'll second. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. New business, number nine, consider approval of 2019, 2020 course description changes.
So you should have in your report packet, the course description changes. We, each year, at this time of year, we ask staff for any changes that they have. So, really the most significant really becomes Spanish. Mrs. Frizell really has, you know, last year was her first year in the position. And this year has come forward with some changes to each of the courses. And what she's really trying to get at in these changes is less of an emphasis on written Spanish. It won't be totally gone by any stretch of the imagination, but really more of an emphasis on practical spoken. There will still be written Spanish included, but really moving toward what is, you know, how could a student go out and use Spanish? Make it practical. And so, really, really trying to make that a practical application in the classroom through each of the courses. And she does that. It's amazing to see her at work in the classroom. She really engages the students in the practical side, the everyday side of the language. But I've also seen some really fabulous lessons on some writing. She had students write an essay just recently in Spanish about a movie they had watched. And they had to write the essay, it was about this movie. And they were not allowed to use their, their, how does she put it? You couldn't write it in English and then translate it. You needed to think it through in the Spanish. And part of the reason was, it's more difficult to actually write it out in English and turn around and try to translate it. And so she wanted, you know, trying to get that kind of an idea across to the kids. So, you know, I think that's a really positive change. The other fairly significant change, Mr. Bruno was seeking to add an engineering two-level course, investigating engineering, that is kind of that, what I want to say, it's that next step beyond the engineering one courses. So, and, you know, this would allow students to further dive into civil engineering or production engineering and get a little deeper dive into that. There were some other changes dealing with prerequisites in courses that were out there, but the two most significant being the Spanish and the addition of the investigating engineering.
Is the current issues one and two, are those the classes Tim teaches that?
Yep.
That he's been using as a basis for the Port Edward's studies?
Yes, and so they use, they use a curriculum component called why we, why we live here, why we work here. And so those are the classes that, because they are, and so he added a prerequisite of like an application to be in the class. I don't, Tim's application isn't too limited. You know, if twenty people or twenty-five kids do this well, probably let them all in the class. The application process is really, the class is so hands-on and so, has to be student, the way the curriculum works in that, really student-driven and student-motivated, that I think he's, you know, if that's not how the student's thinking, it's gonna be tough for them to function in that class.
He wants them to know what they're getting into.
They want them, and really the application process, it's, he wants them to know what they're getting into in that class because it's a very different style of a traditional class, it's very different from a traditional. And it's very active. And it's very popular. And the kids who've been in it have done a fabulous job the last couple of years. But I think he just wants to make sure they understand what they're getting into.
I would be, I certainly enjoyed last year when he brought his, his initial product in with the kids. I hope that if there's a similar opportunity in the spring, that we get a chance to take a look at this year's project.
Yeah.
On the, I see on the Spanish side, obviously, we're just foreign languages. I guess we're basically changing the language in each class. Obviously, the technical education, engineering, we're actually adding classes that.
That's, that's, would be an additional class that would be offered as a one semester, spring-only type class. Not for this year, obviously, it would be looking at next year.
And that, that'll fit in his schedule?
Well, what we basically do is, we will work with him to create what offerings we're putting forward next year. There's typically more offerings than there are actual ability to offer classes. And then we, from there, would add down into what did the kids really sign up for and what. So, so there is a possibility, even though we have this in the course description book, that it doesn't get run as a class.
Is there a, is there a minimum of student attendance per?
We typically haven't had like a solid minimum in that. You know, we've certainly run classes, you know, and part of that's been, and I'll say this overall, maybe this is maybe a better way to answer this, big picture. You know, when we got into some of the smaller class groups, offering something like the advanced math, you know, we needed to offer it to be comprehensive, high school, you know, and have that ability, you know, offering it with two and three students. You know, some of these classes have run five, six students.
Well, I'm very supportive of it.
Yeah.
The class is just, how it goes if there's gonna be an overload on the schedule.
No, no, and that's, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be the case here. So this isn't, yeah, and that's not how we're setting that up. You know, and you bring up a good question about overloads and schedules and whatnot. The only areas we've really ever had to do that are the areas that we have to offer. You know, if it's a have-to and we're short on staff or short on how the sections work out. And the FIAE this year, art sometimes, those have really been the only areas. If, in the elective areas, we really keep it honed in, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, seek a motion to approve the course description for 2019, 2020.
I move to approve the course description changes laid out.
I'll second. A motion and second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carried. Number ten, consider approval of 2019, 2020. Number 10, consider approval of 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021 school calendars.
Could you repeat that locally, please?
A little faster. So I brought really two calendars forward for your approval, the 2019, 2020. Don't get confused when it says draft version 2.5. I go through does and so drafts sometimes, some just get completely thrown away. And then as well, the 2021 calendars. You know, we look at what our neighboring districts do. It becomes a little challenging. Wisconsin Rapids district runs on trimesters. So there's not a lot that always, you know, meshes. The reason for, obviously we need to do what's right for Port Edward's, but sometimes the reason for meshing those schedules in some places, whether it be with Nacusa and Port and Rapids, or Nacusa and Port, or Rapids and Port. There's, sometimes it's, if we could have the joint in-service, we've done that before, where districts have shared resources for in-services. The other is, quite frankly, some of the daycares and some of those services cater to Wisconsin Rapids and add, like the YMCA does, days of no school childcare. Well, they pick the days that Wisconsin Rapids has because that's the big days. So, you know, there's a lot that we do to try to build this. At this point, when we pass 2019, 2020, I'd say that's pretty much unless there is some major reason that something would have to change in this calendar, that calendar goes forward as it is. The 2020, 2021, that's two years out, so you know, we could, if there was something that changed there, we could come back to that one. But I'd ask your approval of both of these calendars. The days add up to the days that we have in our contracts and we hit the requirements as required by the state for hours and minutes.
Refresh my memory again regarding snow days or weather cancellations. What is our practice?
Our practice to, what I've built into this is the practice that we had changed to kind of for emergency purposes a year ago. So we'll have two snow days not made up by students and teachers are able to report if, able to report or required to do so. And again, if they're able to, you know, we have teachers that travel from Marchfield and other places. If the weather's that bad, they can make up the time. On the third snow day and beyond, we continue, we then start adding days. So, or moving days.
That's done according to common sense as the demand requires.
Yeah. And, you know, that two days keeps us still within our minutes requirement. So.
Was there a top one status, like the date in April in old school that you could move those to a snow day? Wasn't that one meeting you just kind of mentioned?
Yeah, you know, and it really depends on the timing there. You want to make sure that you've given, you know, if we went through three snow days early on and so we were going to have to make up one day and we didn't want to tack the day on at the end, we could do that. The kicker becomes, you don't want to, you know, this last April, for instance, you know, we're burning days into mid-April because of big snowstorms. Well, at that point, the notice to get to parents and people just wasn't really timely. So that's why we really didn't do that. But yeah, we could.
I just thought that what we're doing, the talk was, you had a couple of those built in later, just in case.
Yep. And that's why, you know, and we can, if that's something that we see would be more beneficial than moving days at the end. So.
The motion to approve the next two years' school calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the two school calendars.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carried. Number 11, school safety drill review.
So, you know, we did one a couple of months ago with regard to the high school. I forwarded that one to you. It was actually passed due date, but I wanted to make sure that you saw what was happening. The next two, both at the elementary and the high school, we're reporting those to you within the 30-day timeline. We have to do that once a year, at least once, once a year, within 30 days of conducting the drill, reported to you. And Mr. Dobbin, before you escape tonight, we actually have to have you sign off that we reported those. You know, I guess if you'd have some questions for us, otherwise that you have the reports. I don't know that I want to do a whole lot of diving into each. We do run those. The last one at the high school was really, we ran it as a drill. We found a couple of items to correct that we needed to take care of. And, you know, that's, that's the purpose for running those. Whether it's at the elementary school or at the high school is, you know, if there's something that we found that we're lacking, you know, or that we need to improve upon. And we do, I would say almost every time we run a drill, there's something we can do better. So.
Alright. Moving on to number 12, consider approval of school safety plans.
So, we've been working with CISA 10 over the last several months to bring our safety plans into compliance with the new requirements from the state of Wisconsin. You've, those plans need to be adopted by January 1. Obviously, CISA just recently got us these plans in their full, but it has been a several-month process of working with them. They've come in and done safety reviews. We've worked with our local law enforcement. When we did our safety assessment, our school resource officer was part of that with CISA 10 and going through and conducting that. Hand this to you. This is the safety assessment. The full-on safety plan is in your, is in your document, which includes also, this safety assessment is in that full plan. You know, maybe we just start with a little bit of talk about the safety assessment. To CISA 10, along with a couple of school safety experts that they have brought in, along with Mr. Radke, along with staff that we have, maintenance staff, administrative staff. We did a basically a top-to-bottom walkthrough of the facilities. Even within the safety assessment and audit that was conducted, we're still working with CISA 10 on some of the, some of the items. I'll maybe cover a couple of highlights. One of the highlights, which is interesting, one of the areas is, overall, the CISA 10 folks in my conversations with them were very generally pleased with where our district is at and thought we were ahead of a lot of districts that they were working with in a lot of areas. A couple of areas were kind of interesting. One, you know, we did, part of our safety grant allowed us to enhance fencing around this facility. Well, one of the comments comes regarding the high school facility. When you look at our athletic fields at the high school, our playground areas at the high school, we don't have any fencing. Well, they would say best practice would be to fence in those areas. But they would also say, it's also a conversation that as a school board or as a community, do you really want to do that or not? Would it, would it get you more security, wouldn't it? What would it, what would it get you? And so, you know, you know, one of the interesting community aspects about our middle school, high school facility is those grounds are open for community access in the evening. If you fenced them in, they still certainly could be. Do we want to, you know, to fences in? We're probably talking $3,000 or better. I mean, we're talking a major investment of capital. And so, you know, that would be, you know, we would really have to have some discussion and wrestle that. That was certainly one of the points that came in here and said, best practice would say fence it in. But they would also tell us, you know, that's also going to be a community board question that you'd really have to answer. There were some comments in our audit about, you know, they even looked at, they even looked at things like trash receptacles outside the buildings. They looked at items such as surveillance cameras. Some of those items, you know, we are, we're upgrading our surveillance camera system as part of the grant. They talked about trees and shrubs, making sure they're trimmed, making sure there's views to the buildings, signage around the buildings. There's some areas that we know we can enhance in terms of our signage around the buildings. Things like at our outside doors, making sure that there are signs on those outside doors that say during the school day, utilize the main entrance to the building. You know, so that we wouldn't have somebody walking up and trying to really, you know, oh, why can't I get in this entrance? Well, making sure that there's signage. So, you know, overall, I thought the audit went well. And, you know, there's certainly some areas that are easy fixes for us. There's a couple of areas we're going to add motion lighting to in the interior of our buildings. There's, you know, looking at signage. Some of that is very, you know, very easy for us to accomplish and things we can do. Something like the fencing, that's certainly a much bigger conversation. So that in terms of our audit, I thought the audit went well. In terms of the safety plan itself, it really took some of the safety procedures we've developed over the last couple of years, our Alice lockdown drill that we have done and presented to the board, trained our staff up on. It took some of what we already had in place, took some other best practices and really melded those two things together. And so, you know, we have now 140-some page safety plan, but it is compliant with what the state requires us to have in these plans. You know, it covers, it covers, one thing we have to cover in the plan is how we do drills and whatnot. That wasn't in the old plan, that's in the new plan. You know, so just making sure that we have crossed our Ts and dotted our Is in terms of what those recommendations are from the state.
So we have to file a plan by January 1st every year?
I believe it's every, we have to file our updates. So this plan, one of the things that's kind of unique about this plan, you're asking a great question. Yes, I believe we have to file our updates to them. The board has to approve it once every three years, is my understanding. So the board is once every three, but this document is meant to be living in the sense that if we come across a section and go, oh, boy, this isn't working the way the plan says it should, we can, we can go in and make an adjustment and do that.
Do we do the whole CISA thing come and, they want to do that every year?
We won't have, we won't have to have that every year.
Yeah.
No, we did that, we did that as the, bring the plan up to speed this time around. So, no, this should allow us to now, we do have to work with our local law enforcement, you know, continuously to look at, look at the plan, look at the areas, but it is not, you know, that's not something in terms of working with CISA every year. And we actually, we used part of our grant funds for that consultation service this year. So with that grant, we decided that was probably a good use of those funds as part of the funds. Wasn't certainly all of the funds, but.
We still have some of those projects going on anyway, correct?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Definitely last.
Oh, yeah. We are not done with our, implementing our safety grant projects. Quite a bit of it's not really been done yet. We've got some of it scheduled. Some of it will have to be spring work. Some of it's work that we've contracted through with our, with CISA 10. So, yeah.
We've received the money.
No, it's actually reimbursed as we go. So we actually have to expend it and then we get reimbursed. So as we complete the projects, we'll get reimbursement from the Department of Justice. So, good question.
Alright, anything else on school safety drill review?
On this is safety plan adoption.
Safety plan, right.
Yep. We do have separate plans for both buildings, although if you look at them side by side, there's not a lot of difference between them in reality. So.
And this is all in the contract with CISA 10, they put all this together.
Yep, and they have given us rights to it. So now, moving forward, it is ours. So.
Should I be three years old, come back and look at this?
No, no, we have, we now will have the ability to manipulate this on our own. So they, what we do need to do is make sure that we continue to reach out to our local law enforcement and conduct these audits as, in a timely manner and make the changes. I wouldn't expect us to come back to CISA. At the moment, we're working with them to make sure all the editorial things are correct in here. There's still some editorial things that we're working through with them. The base of the plan is ready to go.
At some point, though, won't somebody, won't we need to contract with them to review it for any changes in?
Not, no, not necessarily. They, you know, that's, like I said, they're giving us ownership of it. Right. So we'll have the rights to change, edit, delete, do what we need to. The only, you know, if there was another, you know, the base components of what the law is today are in here. If the base components of the law change, we might go back to them and say, can you help us?
That's what I'm saying, is that we may have to.
We may, but, you know, they're trying to set it up in a way that it's user-friendly for us to really manage it moving forward.
Which would be good.
Yeah. I mean, we, we want it to be us managing moving forward as much as we can, but.
So they have, so the contract that ends as soon as this is done, or is that like a yearly contract you guys decide on that?
No, this was, this is like a one-time consultation contract. So they're consulting to do this project when, when, when we have been satisfied that editorially, all the edits that need to be made and whatnot, then that, again, they've given us ownership of it. So. But I would say our folks at CISA 10 are very good and they're the kind of, they run that agency in a way that if we had a question a year from now on this, we'd easily pick up the phone and say, hey, we had a question on this piece. Can you go over that with us? Can you help us with this? And I would say so long as it's not.
Won't be $200 a minute.
No, no, no.
Dig for every little thing that you can.
No, they've been very good with us on that. So.
So do we have the resolution? The way it's worded?
The resolution he has.
Yeah. So you should have it in the board packet, right?
The ones that you tag with his name?
Yeah.
Yes, they're all, they're in front of him.
They're literally in front of you.
Yeah.
I don't know that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
So should I just read these?
Sure. Yep. That way it's, that we were, letter of the law, I guess.
This is adoption of school safety plan. Whereas the Port Edward School District's Board of Education desires to adopt a school safety plan, be resolved that Port Edward School District brought the proposed school safety plan before the Board of Education on December 12th, and each member reviewed it in its entirety. Resolved that the Board of Education are and each acting alone hereby authorized to do and perform any and all such acts, including execution of any and all documents and certificates as such members shall deem necessary or advisable to carry out the purposes and intent of the foregoing resolutions. It is hereby certified by the undersigned that the foregoing resolution was duly passed by the Board of Education of the Port Edward School District on the 12th day of December in the year 2018 in accordance with the memorandum or bylaws and articles of incorporation of the Port Edward School District and that the said resolution has been duly recorded in the mini-book and is in full force and effect. Yeah, so the, this part, oh, so those all on our board packet, right?
Okay. Yep, and it's in the plan itself.
Yeah.
Yep.
Come from that.
Yep.
Okay. So with that, take a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the board resolution of school safety plan. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carrying.
Oh, yeah, in, well, how did they make the motion?
That was elementary school, either elementary or maybe it was just high school. Yeah. That was the elementary, they're, they're worded the same.
They're worded the same. So if you just want to make another motion.
So is there a motion on the floor for the middle high school? And we'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving John Edwards' middle school high school safety plan. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carrying. Moving on to 13, consider approval of middle school girls' basketball coaches, Jody Waltonburg and Joe Hints.
We'd ask that you approve both Ms. Waltonburg and Mr. Hints for that coaching opportunity this, this winter.
I make a motion to approve middle school basketball coaches, Jody Waltonburg and Joe Hints. Seconding. Motion and seconding discussion. Any non, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carrying. Number 14, consider approval of 6603 agreement with the Nixus School District.
Yes, we'd ask your approval of the 6603 agreement. This is for services we provided through special education from the Nixus School District.
Seek a motion. I make a motion, consider approval of 6603 agreement with the Nixus School District. No seconding. A motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Number 15, consider approval of fourth, eighth grade promotion, placement, and retention procedures.
I, that did not attach, it does not look like that attached into.
I don't see that, yes.
I don't think so. So you'll just give me a moment. We'll come up with that for, I'm about to, yeah, I'm able to just print out some copies.
I look forward to Cara, would you be able to print it?
I'd have to go, well, yeah, I'm gonna have to go and log on my computer in there, because their printers don't, don't hook up here. So I have to go log into my computer and all things, it's not.
Well, I can, I can walk you, we're gonna need copies. So we'll see, we might have a paper copy.
Does it say paper, paper copy? That's gonna be the better way to do it, because.
I apologize, that was supposed to be LinkedIn, right?
Yeah, and I know. Maybe my laptop won't like me to do that. My, my desktop, it will be here till midnight waiting for it to start off. So let me try.
See if we have a copy, then we can make some copies of it.
Got it. Awesome, because, yeah.
Do you have a copy, so you can?
Yes, that I have. I can use my own copy, right? Yeah, should be okay. If not, I might share mine with you.
Well, I'll give you the basis. So according to our policy, one of the things that we have to do is, the policy directs the district administrator to develop basically what's going to happen for fourth and eighth grade promotion and retention. That's covered by state statute in terms of those two grades specifically. And the policy line basically says the following. The district administrators to prepare a list of specific criteria for promoting students from fourth and eighth grade. The criteria shall include the student's scores on the fourth and eighth grade examinations. Unless the student has been excused from taking the examination, the student's academic performance, recommendation of teachers, which shall be based solely on the student's academic performance and any other criteria recommended for consideration. So we get that, we'll show you what we have in mind for how we move forward with fourth and eighth grade promotion and retention.
Is this just an update, or is it something?
This is, this is, this would really be a procedure, so this isn't policy. The policy says, the policy says we're gonna do this, this is the procedure for doing it, and because it specifically says in here, the board has to have the consideration on this, that's why we're bringing it forth to you as this procedure. So as you look at this, so it really talks about, so how are students going to get into fifth and ninth grade? It basically talks, either the fourth grade, students failing English, Language Arts, or Mathematics for the year in fourth grade will be recommended for summer remediation during the elementary summer school. Then it talks about students failing three or four core subjects for the fourth grade year will be referred to an academic review panel to be made up of at least two core teachers, the principal, the school council, who will then examine the following. And it talks about student performance on state testing, teacher recommendations, age of the student developmental readiness, social and emotional development, and attendance. We'll look at those items, the review panel would then make a recommendation for remediation. It may be that the student's promoted, but that there's stipulations, if they complete summer school, other academic requirements. It may be that they're retained and would have to do that grade level, you know, do a repeat of that grade level. It does talk about here that a student demonstrates academic satisfactory progress in meeting the goals and objectives in an IEP, a 504, or an AT-RIS plan. So really, the essence of that is the IEP is the letter of the law for a student with an IEP. So that IEP may say the student's being promoted, but it's really because the IEP is the letter of the laws, the contract between the district and the student. The eighth grade is really, really very similar. The core subjects, the English, Language Arts, the math, the science, and the social studies, and talks about students, if they fail one or two, would have summer remediation through our summer school program. Students failing three or four would trigger another step, which would be that review panel again, that would again look at whether or not the student's ready to move on to ninth grade.
Basically, can I just interrupt?
What's that?
Basically, what we have to do is we have to make it general enough that it's not so specific that we paint ourselves into a corner, but we also want to make sure we look at the whole child, so not just academically, oh, they're failing these classes, we're retaining them, because we all know that that's not always necessarily the way that, you know, that's obviously just one small part of the picture of each kid. So the guidelines there, make it general enough, specific enough that we have something to go on if we feel that this is necessary, but general enough that we can, as a group, including parents, teacher, principal, so on and so forth, come together and make a decision together what's best for the kids. So that's kind of why some of those, some of those bullet points in there are a little bit general, but it's purposely put that way.
May I ask what this replaces, or what the current policy looks like? Well, it doesn't replace anything. We have nothing, we have no procedure in place. So when you adopted policy last year, when you adopted the policy, part of the policy said, we're gonna develop a procedure. This particular one, a lot of the procedures or a lot of the rules it says that we develop, we don't necessarily bring the rules back to you or the, the how it's going to be implemented. This particular one says the board has a say in it, and part of that is how the state law reads for this particular topic. So that's why, that's why it does say at the top of this, fourth and eighth grade promotion, placement, and retention procedure, because this doesn't replace a policy. We would be more or less tacking this onto the policy and saying, the policy says we have to have something, well, this is our procedure.
And we had a procedure in the past, but it was so specific that it, it was stating, like I think it still said WKCE exam, which we have not, you know, certain points on this and a point system, and so it was so archaic, it was just, it was outdated. So this gives us a little more, more general guidelines, but still specific enough that.
Essentially, it is a requirement that, you know, brought forward with our review of policy.
Correct.
Updating our policy to be compliant.
Yep.
Obviously, this is just a secondary step of that.
Yep, this is that secondary step, it's the procedural step.
Fourth grade, just because we moved into the high school, is that why we?
That's what the state says.
That is what the state, this is a state requirement, so.
It's not because, it's not because of the way the school.
Nothing to do with it. It was that way when the fifth graders were here, so.
All right, perfect.
I can say that in one of my previous lifetimes, having taught eighth graders for 30-plus years, we were faced with this exact issue over and over and over again. And I, I'm reading this, I'm like, this is, I would love to have had criteria to work with on this basis, you know, when I was a classroom teacher, because this, this clearly delineates well ahead of time what the expectations are for the, for the kid. It is punitive, it's remedial, it gives them plenty of opportunity to, to understand from the get-go what they will have to demonstrate to make that jump. It incorporates, like you say, not just specifics, but a wide range of different qualifications. Obviously, you don't want to retain gobbles and oods of kids, but every so often, the right situation comes along where a particular child could really benefit from another shot at it, and in the past, that was really difficult to do. I, this, this looks very nice. I wish we'd had it earlier.
Okay. With that, I'll seek approval of the fourth, eighth grade promotion, placement, and retention procedures.
So.
I will second it. Motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carrying. Next item on the agenda, discussion on future budget scenarios with possible operational referendum scenario.
So we put this as a discussion item. You know, last month, we presented this more as a superintendent just presentation. This, this is more of a, just for you to start wrapping your minds around it, in general discussion with questions, with thoughts, with comments. I'm gonna also hand you a second sheet here. So, and I'm gonna make a caveat and say, I've got a little bit of a mistake on my budget considerations and referendum planning. I apologize for that. So, you know, really, I tried to lay out just some different, just some different things to think about, where we've been, where we're headed. This year, obviously, we have a deficit of 300, of about 304,000. Next year, we will see some additional revenue to the tune of about $134,000, and that's because of our enrollment growth. But I do need to say, number three, I messed up. I reused 304,000, and it's actually more in the 400,000-plus range as a deficit that would be projected moving forward. We've certainly taken some steps over the last several years to do, address some budget issues. We've had a major rebuild of our benefits package with regard to the health insurance. We've decreased budgets where we could, curriculum maintenance supplies, and my, supplies in general for the district, we're constantly looking at that. We were looking at some of our, how we utilize some of our different suppliers, how we purchase things, classroom supplies, energy efficiency measures. Certainly, the idea there is to save money over time. Budget increases, you know, despite our deficit, we've certainly had to hire staff to address the influx of students. I'm gonna share something with you. I found a memo, was it Monday or Tuesday I found the memo? It was a memo produced in 2015, in the spring of 2015, kind of an inter-office memo, dealing with projecting out some enrollments for the very next fall. So this is spring of 2015, projecting enrollments in the PK through fifth grade for the fall. Of that group, PK through fifth grade, forwarding them over now, in the years those kids are today, we are plus 78 in that group of kids, that from fifth, the PK through, through fifth grade of 2015, where they sit in the classrooms today, those actual kids, are plus 78 in their number, and we just tack one more grade level on, tack the sixth grade on from that very same year, 2015, when we had 12. We are 22 more kids over in that grade alone, and so that brings that total to 100. That span of kids, following and tracking those kids from 2015 to 2018, they are plus 100 in those grade levels. Now, due to ins and outs and graduating classes and whatnot, you know, we've had an enrollment growth of just shy of 90 over that time on the whole district, but I found it interesting that sitting today in those grades are 100 more kids actually, in that span of grades.
Pre-K's.
Well, you know, forward them now, so it's ninth grade through whatever now, but yeah.
Four, three years ago.
Yeah. Yep. We've hired additional staff, most significantly in the teaching area. We, you know, I did some looking at, we've, one of the, one of the interesting things was, in 2015, we had the same exact food service staff in the sense of number of people that we actually have today, and in 2015 was a year we started to, we, in that range, somewhere in there, we started to, because we were thinking 356 kids, 354 kids, we were starting to dial that back. So by 2016, 2017, we're at a lowest numbers, even though we were increasing. So that staff, we've restored it back to four staff members in that area. You know, so maintenance, again, 2015, we have a little more maintenance staff by half a staff member than we did in 2015, but it's really the teaching areas where we've, you know, really had to add, add staff members. We've deferred updates. Science curriculum, three years ago, four years ago, science worked through an entire curriculum update process and stopped short. One of the reasons we stopped them short of adopting a new curriculum was all but one of the science teaching staff members turned over for us in one year. So, and it was that particular staff member, it had been a brand-new staff member, so we kind of put the brakes on it and said, we don't want to be bringing in new staff and suddenly not having some veteran staff there. I shouldn't say all but one turned over, but we, we had some issues there that caused us to put the brakes on that. And really, since then, we have not readdressed it, even though they had worked on really adopting a new curriculum sequence and model and new curriculum resources, we've kind of put the brakes on it. Social studies, right now, the standards in social studies have been updated, the state has rolled those out. We are sitting with social studies textbooks from 2003. You know, we keep limping those along, and every now and then, we have to go out on Amazon and try to buy an old copy somewhere, as we've had more kids or a bunch of old copies, and it's getting harder and harder to do. Math curriculum, our math curriculum, Ms. Christie will date out this year or next year?
What happened with, at the elementary schools, we have a, with the curriculum that was adopted five years ago, there was a consumable budget where we would get every year, that included the consumable workbooks that came with it. We are on year five. So either we need to re-up for the, that same program and continue to get the consumables, or we need to adopt a new curriculum or a new textbook series. So we're looking into that, and I- So we're looking into that, and I have to kind of look at some numbers too and see what is most fiscally responsible, but we're, we're done with that. For this, we gotta do something, we don't have a choice.
You, you adopted an early elementary reading program for two or three grade levels?
K two.
K two, three grade levels. That was twenty thousand dollars, three grade levels. We're talking a science curriculum now that really needs its overhaul, we're talking a social studies curriculum that needs its overhaul. Those budgets used to, you know, when we talk about deferring, the budgets used to be in the forty thousand dollar range. Those budgets are sitting in the ten thousand dollar range and really allow us to simply buy the additional resources we've needed as we've increased kids. They haven't really allowed for a full readoption. And last year, we did, we did make that work, but there are areas that we know curriculum-wise, we, we need to move it forward. You know, and, and so, a lot of that has been deferred. You know, this spring, we talked about the need to really replace a school van. We deferred that off, we didn't replace it, but that school van still is gonna need replacement, and the other school van, I would say probably within five years. We might be able to stretch that other school van a bit longer, but it's really, you know, we're, we're, we're in that point where those do need the replacement. I did put deferred or upcoming maintenance on the following, and I should say, maybe some of this has been deferred off over many years, many, many years. Some of it is not really deferred, it's just stuff we need to think about doing in the future. You know, there are, there are some things sitting out there, I won't go through every one of these on the list per se, but I'll give you a great, for instance, A and B. Flooring at John Edwards, and I put middle school, so you know it's part of the building, but there's a tile floor on the first floor in the middle school section, and a tile floor on the second floor of the middle school section. If you walk down that tile floor, there are some major issues starting to happen with that tile floor. We're getting cracks running the, the entire width of the floor, and the floor is separating. And those tile will require extra mitigation efforts. Those were put in an era when you would have talked, probably glued down with asbestos glue, you know, glue with asbestos. It will require mitigation, and we'll have to come up with a solution. They are stable at the moment, but they are, they do continuously get worse, and you can see that progressing over time. I bring up the elementary, and I started with Port Edwards Elementary, main hallway. Our carpet, when you go walk out, really start to examine the carpet in the front hallway here, it's, it's time. And, and it's probably time to also think about, should we do something other than carpet down the main walkways of an elementary school building where kids are drinking in mud and snow and those things? Would there be a, a longer-term solution?
Lots of new hard surface flooring choices.
Yep.
Commercial building.
Yep. There are things that, you know, energy efficiency was a great project for us. It got us ninety percent of our roofing, or eighty-five percent of our roofing. Well, the last part of it really boils down to two areas. One is over the, the music and technology education area. That piece of roofing is really the last piece that will have to be tackled at some point. We are now just in the beginning phases of seeing that roof start to have some of the issues that we dealt with for several years on some of the other roofs. Could we defer that off a little longer, probably, but it is something down the road we do need to address. We will have to re-seal coat the Dorothy Alexander Auditorium roof, that's a seal-coated roof, a little different process, so that will come up. There are, we're talking, right now, our, our fiber optic line that runs, we actually own the fiber optic line that runs between this building and the high school. That is first-generation fiber optic, and is due for an upgrade. In fact, the Sonata told me, I think we're a couple of generations into fiber optic now from when that line was originally placed. Not only that, our actual, our actual data line in the high school, for instance, is first generation. We have not really upgraded our data line, and it is time to do some of those things. You know, there's things like, you know, simple things, I would say an item that wouldn't be, you know, might be, you know, we, we talked to a couple of con, concrete contractors about redoing the sidewalk that runs from what I would say, it's on the south side of the high school building, and it runs out the entrance that would be maybe near the bandroom, and runs along the bandroom wall, runs along technology education, and meets the sidewalk on the street there. That sidewalk is in a state of, it's crumbling. We have issues with it. It needs, you know, we, I would say, very soon, we need to replace and repair that. That item isn't gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars, that might be a ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollar repair, but, you know, those are things that we do not currently have built into our budget as we have tried to really hone in the budget. And again, some of these items probably need repair or replacement sooner, some might be able to wait. This is more a list to start to get the mind thinking about, some of these challenges are gonna come up in five, six years, maybe a little later, some maybe a little sooner. So, so first, I wanted to give you that list and just some considerations. We then included some models of budget forecasting and the idea of what, what would, what would the base scenario, if, if we did nothing, really, what would that look like? If we, if we looked at the, the opportunity of an operational referendum? And so, the next couple of pages really talk about some different scenarios. The column, that is, if you're looking at those scenarios, the column in blue is the current year, and then you can see years projected forward. And we've brought to you four different scenarios, however, Lisa and I have run a dozen different scenarios, but we've brought to you four to start to wrap your mind around. We, you know, Carrie, you brought up a question last time, you know, running some different scenarios on some different models of, what if we get more state aid, what if we don't? We've talked a lot about that. We did run a couple of models and scenarioed out a couple of items in terms of, what about growth enrollment? What about reduction enrollment? You know, without getting into all of the fallout of the fall election, one thing that, you know, and this is, this is where this becomes interesting, because this gets into the politics of the fall election a little, and what's gonna happen with our state budget. Here's what I know. The governor and the legislature are controlled by two separate parties. The last governor, or the outgoing governor, I should say, shared the party of the legislature. We didn't get a budget until late into September, the last biennial. And there were certainly some disagreements on what should be in that budget, even between the governor of the same party and the legislature of that same party. Now we have opposing parties. This is a really interesting question. I don't know how to answer, like, how do we even scenario that, because I could see many different things playing out. I, I could see, there, there is a potential opportunity where the state legislature just said, we're not gonna send any budget to the governor, we're just gonna let the current budget roll two more years. That leaves us really in a, in, in the same state. I could certainly see a budget where the governor proposes more increases to school funding, and the state legislature doesn't write it that way, they pass their budget, and then the, and then the governor tries to craft line item veto. Certainly, there is a possibility that they all could sit down and write a budget and come up with one. So it is so hard to answer that question. I think what becomes even more interesting is, because those are all unknowns, you know, moving forward scenarios based on those unknowns, I could move forward dozens of scenarios. So we did, we did forecast, and I didn't put it in here, 'cause I didn't want to get too muddled. We did forecast some scenarios, you know, what if we have some decline in enrollment? What if we have some more growth in enrollment? And I'll, and I can, I can give you a couple of answers on that as we look at these. One, the very first scenario we modeled, or the, would be the second one, so it would, so you have your base, and then what's called scenario one. That model, we forwarded what's called a non-recurring referendum for five years, asking for five hundred thousand dollars a year. Considering that we have some maintenance projects that we need to complete, in that five hundred thousand, we do achieve a balanced budget, at least in the first two years, we can, you know, we achieve that balanced budget by years three, four, and five, as you can see, we start to slide back into a deficit situation. It doesn't happen overnight, there may be budget things that, you know, by year three, maybe there's other budget scenarios in place at that time that, that mitigates what might be a deficit. Maybe there's areas at that point we can cut, maybe there's, maybe there's more revenue. And so that's what becomes hard to, to really project out. You can look at the very bottom line under scenario one, you can see what would happen to the mill rates over the course of time. And in reality, in year one of passing a five hundred thousand dollar referendum, in year one, there is potential the mill rate drops. Now I say potential, I don't say it's a guarantee. Some of that potential is based on some property value growth, more aid within the revenue cap. You can look at, the second scenario is a five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two years, and then it writes in another fifty, so it brings it to six hundred thousand in the last three years. You can see what happens to our, our deficit line goes away for at least three years. And again, we hit to two thousand twenty-three in there, there is a deficit showing, but again, there may be ways to mitigate that deficit at that point, there might be, again, more aid, more other things, and it's not a very large deficit. But you can see by year five, that budget deficit really begins to project out again in a more significant way. And, and again, I, you know, you can take a look at what happens to our mill rates. You know, one thing that's, that we could, you know, certainly talk about is, you can see what the mill rate was in two thousand eighteen, so we were at eleven, six, five. You can see this year, ten, nine, one. And even in these two first scenarios, the mill rate potentially goes down in year one. Keep in mind, three years ago, we were sitting on a mill rate of thirteen, we were twelve, nine, 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 nine repeating. So, we're not, we're not going back to the thirteen days. As you can see in any of these, in any of these scenarios, doesn't project us going back to the situation of looking at a thirteen mill rate.
Well, that's pretty much due to the added values.
That's added values, it's additional aid that offsets that, you know, so, so there are, you know.
And those are positive.
And that's the positive, we don't go back to those days. The second page runs a couple of other scenarios. It just simply addresses the idea of six hundred thousand over five years. What you'll look at is, what I found interesting was, the last two years are the same exact result in the model if you did five fifty, five fifty, and then six hundred, six hundred, six hundred. You, you get the same exact result in the last two years. The difference becomes in that deficit line in those first three years, and again, maybe some potential to, you know, restore funding into curriculum, restore funding, you know, fund a, fund a van, do some of the maintenance projects. If you just think curriculum alone, if we start to think about replacing a science curriculum and that being a, potentially a forty thousand dollar line item, you know, it really eats away. You know, so the scenarios we're bringing you do, does try to restore some of that funding so that we can take on some of those pieces, and it also tries to balance that deficit. And the last one, the last one is a recurring six hundred thousand, so that's the idea of, of adding permanently. That gets added permanently to our revenue stream. So it only shows up once in the actual, like, calculation, but then it's getting added at the top every year after that. So if you look at that scenario number two, six hundred thousand recurring, and again, you can look at the, you can look at the mill rates and what's going on with mill rates. And again, you know, the mill rate situation changes if we, you know, this year, we had excellent growth. We, we had positive five-plus growth in our property value. This next year, for the purpose of this model, we've projected a, what we put in as we figured was a modest one and a half percent growth. If it's two, that helps the mill rate. If it's two and a half, that helps the mill rate. If it's one point two five, that certainly, that mill rate will fluctuate then. So, you know, and, so we really modeled these out as kind of a status quo. Like I said, I did run a couple of other scenarios. I, I can maybe express this to you, let's say our student count runs ten less, let's just take ten off. What that really does, and let's look at the non-recurring six hundred thousand, I can just explain this to you. What it really does is it adds about a hundred thousand dollars to the deficit by year five. If we added ten more students, it takes about a hundred thousand dollars off the deficit by year five.
So, obviously, the fund ten right now, the money being spent, I guess you have, those, those numbers moving forward are not doing any projects, basically keeping the same.
No, no, that projects out taking on some of, some additional, some additional spending in there. Are you asking why there might be a surplus showing versus a deficit?
I guess I'm trying to, obviously, if we do five hundred, six hundred, that's adding to the budget every year. How mu, but how much of that do you feel is just gonna be able to keep operating the same way that we're operating today without doing any upgrades or any?
Okay, so, then, we probably need to get into a different whole set of modeling scenarios where we literally model, the only thing we model is eliminating the deficit and not adding money anywhere. That set of models, and we did run some of those. The problem being, that's, you know, we looked at that and said, that's not sustainable, there's no.
Because even these, five years from now, we're gonna have higher or a little lower deficit than we have now.
Yeah.
Still the hole.
Yeah, and that's why we just, that's why we did that, we just, we said, is it truly, you know, if all we did was eliminate the deficit, the problem becomes, we don't take into consideration even inflationary expense growth at that point. And, and that becomes a really dicey situation to deal with. And really what it means then is, we're probably still dealing in deficits every single year.
Well, that's my mean.
Yeah.
We had five hundred to it, I mean, you're talking, these projects, I know, I mean, some need to be done, but I mean, all these, all these projects are.
Oh, that's.
Very big money, I mean, is there even gonna be the money in these numbers to do those projects?
There will be some money to do some of those. That list by no means is priority, so first off, make, just understand, I did not prioritize it, nor did I cost it. I just said, these are the things we know at some point will have to be addressed.
Curriculum, obviously, is the most of, the important thing that we've.
Yes.
We've learned over test scores and different things.
There are some of these projects that become safety. That sidewalk repair will have to get done, it is a safety issue, you know, we know that. You know, so there are some of those that we do have to account for in here. There are, like I said, there are some. I'll give you an example. If we can run, if we can take that roof project to replace ultimately the music tech area roof, roof area, like literally the only area we didn't do, or that wasn't due to necessarily be done within that scope of those projects, but we know will be coming up soon, we are starting to see that roof delaminate and starting to see some issues. One thing that the board can look to is, we have debt going off in two thousand twenty-five. At that point, that might be the opportunity to say, this roof project needs to get done. At that point, that might be the opportunity to say, this roof project needs to get done. When that, that peels off, you know, that might be the opportunity where the board says, you know, it's probably not a bad position to have a modest line of debt to replace the debt that peeled off to take care of maybe some of the bigger items. So that would be, you know, but now my purpose for putting it on here was, you know, it just needs to be in our, in our forward thinking about, you know, things that need to be done. I would say flooring probably make, some of the flooring may come ahead of that roof at the moment. And there are things, and we might not be able to, you're right, we may not be able to tackle that entire list or even half of that list. Well, you know, if we start prioritizing and go, okay, we know in the first couple of years of a referendum that there are some very important either safety items or items that where it's just failing, and we can take care of some of those. So that's really how we built these models was not to tackle the entire list, but to at least say, are there some things we could prioritize off and start to tackle? A van is gonna need to be, you're talking school safety, or safety of the children, safety of the employees. And you're also talking the potential, when we talked in the spring about a van bumping up to a 10-passenger van. You're talking now, you're talking potential savings on a bus down the road. You know, if we could do a van in the next year or two, and then do another van a year or two after that, now we have the potential for 20 transport up to 20 passengers. Right now, our max transport in a van is 14, and that's with the adults driving it. You know, we could be looking at transporting 18, and then two more, and then the two adults. So that, you start to eliminate busing then. So, you know, and efficiency, van today, if we bought a van today, it's probably gonna be more efficient than the 2007 that we're running. So, yeah, but, you know, did that answer your question, Ben?
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to make sure that what's built in, you have money to do some of these projects. I realize there's not enough to take big projects, but a little bit of money so we can move forward.
And that's what we were trying to build in there, was some ability to restore some curriculum funding, some ability to restore some of the maintenance funding that we know we're gonna need to take, start taking care of. So, yeah, that is built in, that's why I presented these specific scenarios, and I didn't really bring to you just balancing the deficit. Balancing the deficit really probably simply leads to continued deficit.
Obviously, we're hoping with development across the river and things in 2025, if things go right, that we'll bring, we'll bring some more revenue.
Actually, that won't, so that's one thing, and I, I've actually had that discussion with a few other people. They're all, they're still in our district, so that doesn't, the only thing that would change is if for some reason that development being rejoined to the village, that rejoining to the village would be like an increase for some reason, because they're still in our taxing district as a school district.
They pay.
So they're already paying, they're already paying the school district tax, and we have, that would be another reason why that mill rate has started to slide down in the last couple of years. That development, you know, they went from, that area went and maybe the first year of being, I think it was like 1%, accounted for 1% of the district's tax, to I think this year it's like 10, 10, 11% of the district's tax, taxable area. So, you know, that's, that's pretty significant, and, you know, so that, we do see that. So that is something we're not gonna, the village might benefit from that, the district's already benefiting from it, so. My, my hope is, again, this evening, we haven't asked you to pass anything, we haven't asked you, but my hope is, maybe to get some feedback from you on use their direction you want us to head, because if you look further on your agenda, we asked that there be a special meeting added in January. And what we'd really like to do is really hone in on it, and really hone in on what things are gonna be so that we would be prepared to, you know, if the board desires to do that, prepare to pass a resolution that would potentially set up a referendum. I did also give you a sample of what just the wording might look like. There's no dollar amounts in there, it doesn't, that piece isn't included. There are different ways to word these, this is just one version of how this could be worded. I could give you, so if you look at that piece, it talks about 15 dollars a year for five years, beginning with 1920 and ending for 2023. And then it says, "For nonrecurring purposes of operational and maintenance expenses." There are other ways to word that, we showed you this one, but it could be worded, "For nonrecurring purposes consisting of maintaining and enriching current levels of educational programming, technology, and school facilities." So there are different ways we could word that. You know, so those are some considerations that I would say in January, we would really wanna hone in on, go, okay, how do we want this worded, and what message would that send folks? And what message do, you know, I think one of the things we want people to know is, we have tried to pare things back. And we were doing that when the enrollment was going down. And now that we've been caught with, with an enrollment increase in a significant manner, there is no other school in, in Southwood County, there is no other school in Wood County. And I would suspect there is no other school in a swath that probably takes you from Adams to Hurley that has experienced a three-year growth on a percentage basis that this district has. I know there is no other school in our county, and I would suspect it's a very broad area. You would, you'd have to be getting into some suburban areas before you really start to see. Because as we look in a three-year timeframe, 28% growth, that is unheard of. People are happy, people are jumping for joy at 3% and 4% growth. And there are districts that are out there going, you know, we've had 1% decline or 2% decline that are thankful it's at that low rate, so.
Are you looking for additional comments?
Yeah, I guess thoughts, comments on the direction, again, nothing is binding. This is just thoughts on how you want to approach this.
As I said, when we ran through this before, I've kind of flipped my thinking from recurring to nonrecurring based on, you know, the scenarios presented by the representative from Beard. You would think that the process of a recurring permanent addition of X dollars to the budget would solve the problem, but it doesn't. And it leaves you at the end of that time with a position of having to go back and decide, how are you going to resolve it again, when you perhaps unintentionally instilled in the minds of the citizens of the district that, oh, well, this will solve the problem, it doesn't.
There, yeah, there are districts that have done both, that do, that have a recurring in their system, that's there forever in perpetuity, and then have gone back and asked voters, every X number of years, they ask for more. The interest, you know, the, if, if the board did want to go down the path of a recurring, I would say the caveat that would have to be given every time it would be spoken about would be, you know, this, this would be added, but this is no guarantee that this permanently solves any problem on budgeting down the road. The other thing is, that I think is kind of a, maybe a fiscally conservative approach to take is, the nonrecurring allows the changes to happen over the next five years, at the state level, at the federal level, whatever those changes may be, good for the district, bad for the district, or otherwise. But it allows that time to happen, it gives the district maybe at least some stability during that time period. And then you could come back and say, no, actually, the, the situation at the state and federal level has helped us, and our local economy has improved, and we don't need to come back for an additional amount, we can let this lapse. Or we may need an additional amount for then another five years, but it's less, or we may need an additional amount, and maybe it's more. It allows, it allows the district to reassess.
The nonrecurring doesn't really solve it either.
Not, not, but again, only because our scenario, only because our scenarios are, don't know scenarios.
You won't know anything for two to three years.
And that's why I say, that's why I say, maybe generally, that more fiscally conservative position is, fix it for at least the next couple of years and give yourself some, you know. The, I think, you know, we could model this out at two, you know, we could do a two-year or three-year referendum. I think the problem becomes then, we're just continuously talking about this for, you know, it just, you're continuously now talking about it and continuously then maybe reapproaching the voters.
I think you answered it with the budget considerations, but my question was, like, the average taxpayer will think enrollment is up. Why do we need more money to operate, you know, how would you answer that question?
You know, and really, I think, I think a couple of things is, once, when enrollment was going down, we were cutting our budgets all over the place, and, and in a mode where we were trimming, and doing a lot of trimming to the point of, of trimming staff, trimming out curriculum updates. Because, again, we were also faced with the situation of, you know, if we were gonna update a curriculum, there weren't as many students to have to buy the resources for. So we just didn't need as much in those areas. The state and the way they fund schools is based on a three-year rolling average of your previous three years of enrollment. So, you know, the, probably the easiest part of that question is, our operating budget this current fiscal year is based on if we had 388 students. We have 443 sitting in our seats. Next year, we know it'll be based on 409, 408, and something, it's right in that 408, 409. We already know that, because we know what that rolling average turns into next year. And again, let's say it's status quo, we're still educating 443 students, but our budget's based on if we had 409. Our, our revenue limits are based on that. So it's a lagging, enrollment growth has a lag before you see the full potential of your revenue.
The other thing that a nonrecurring five-year referendum does is that people like to have a say. And one of the things that the voters in the district, parents, actors in the district would then feel empowered by being able to say at the end of this five-year opportunity, okay, and come back to us and advise us as to what's going on, and if we feel that, that need is appropriate, then, it empowers the voter, it empowers the electorate to be engaged in their school district and engaged in knowing just exactly what the programs their children are receiving costs. I think that's a plus. It's never a bad idea to give people a choice.
I mean, nonrecurring seemed to be the right thing at first, just because the, the one, he was gonna keep coming in, but the nonrecurring is because of five years. Lead a look at, lead a look at things and programs and restructure, different things that they have to at that point.
You know, we've, you know, as we've presented you and you have passed the energy efficiency programs, for instance, we've been very conscientious about the mill rate in making sure that that mill rate, it becomes, comes down. So very high mill rate, you know, and so we're still very conscientious about that, I think, in most of these proposals. You can't totally predict out what that mill rate's gonna do even next year. We have maybe a little idea of what it could be close to, but, you know, is there any one of those proposals that's feeling like this might be the way to go? And, and, you know, and again, we did try to build in restoration of some money so that we could start to tackle some of those items that we know are, are coming due, whether it be curriculum items, whether it be some of the, some of the maintenance items. You know, and one of the tasks we'll have to do is, I can tell you, what did I get to on that list, on maintenance and EE? I might be able to get to ZZ or triple Z. We'll have to look at that list and really begin to, from a maintenance standpoint, prioritize it, really talk about what it's truly gonna cost. And that will direct, you know, and Ben, if we wanted to do everything on that list, I'd tell you, we're, 600,000 isn't gonna get there. But I don't think that, again, I don't know that that's the responsible way to look at that, and there, but that list is more of like, this is just down the road, at some point, these are gonna be things, you know, five, six, seven years that need to be addressed, some of them in a year or two, some of them in five or six years.
You compare the baseline mill rates for, for all of these, you look at the 550, 2, 600, 3, you compare it to the 600 for five, we're picking up just a little bit more revenue, we're keeping it straight across the board, the mill rates don't vary a whole lot at all.
Did we say a quarter for 50? A quarter for 50,000, 50 cents for 100,000.
I mean, you're looking at, the nonrecurring 600,000 is the biggest block of cash in the choice that you're looking at. And that's only a total of, it's 100,000 more than the nonrecurring 550, 2, 600, 3, bottom of the first page.
Yep.
I, and that's, looking at the comparison of the mill rates and the figures, that's where I would go. But I mean, I'm certainly open to suggestion in the other area that anybody else thinks is more appropriate.
You know, the, the other, you know, another consideration that I did not put on here is, we certainly, the other thing we want to do is probably avoid a slide into a position where we're continuously going for short-term borrow.
Fund balance on the 600 is higher, a little better than the other one, in the fifth year.
Yeah, you know, and that, again, there's certainly a cost of doing that business to the district over, over time. And so that's something, you know, we certainly don't wanna be, there are, and if, we actually looked, it was 2008. We found that information, 2008 was the last short-term borrower that was done. Yep, and, but again, you know, that's, there, there always can be situations where that might come up again in the future. But again, that's, you know.
I was brought up with the loan, was, 2024 is when the one loan is up?
2025, they are all paid off.
And there's a partial that?
There's a part, there's a small loan that'll come in 2021, 21 is the last payment. But we, the way we restructured those, when what we had happening was, there was gonna be a balloon payment due in 2024. Our payment was actually gonna go down, but then we were gonna have this big like 300,000 or 400,000 dollar balloon payment. And so we restructured the whole thing so that when the one drops off in 2021, that we increase our payment on the other to avoid the balloon.
So it was really not a gain in 2021?
No, there's not gonna be a gain in 2021. What we did was avoided a balloon payment that we probably couldn't afford to pay. Yeah, but when, when debt does fall off in 2025, like I said, some of those more significant capital projects, if we can defer those out that long, and that roof section may be one of those. Now, that's, you know, at that point, it may be hoof the district at that point to say, okay, let's consider another, you know, a 20-year note that's reasonable, that accomplishes some capital things that we need to accomplish at this point.
Well, you've done a lot of research, what's your, what's your thoughts on it?
I've brought you the four scenarios that I thought would get us. I've brought you the four scenarios that I thought would get us at least to where we need to be for the next few years. I'm gonna tell you that the five hundred thousand will get us some of the way back to maybe where we need to be with curriculum and whatnot, but I really don't know that it gets us down to this maintenance list at all. And it may really restrict how much we're able to take off in, in, or deal with in terms of curriculum and whatnot. But, again, I'm, I'm gonna give you my fiscally conservative answer, think you need to see that, because that, you know, it's, it, it's gonna be tighter, we may not be able to really bite off curriculum bans and maintenance items that are really needed.
This is not a luxury scenario.
I am not, no.
We're not putting in a, a pie in the sky new edition, we're not adding any, any, pick, pick whatever, you know, type of, of item you, you want to use as an illustration that have been done in other places.
You know, an interesting, you know, one of the items I have on this list, when you talk, it's not a luxury scenario. One of the items I put on this list are replacement of doorways, doors at John Edwards Middle and High School. There's a segment of the building, when it was updated, that whatever type of door they put in, and I think it was the fifties edition, almost every single door is delaminating. It's some severely, some not so much.
It was dried out.
Yep, so the doors will eventually begin now to fail. In the sixties edition, what's interesting is, you go through the physical education area, athletic area, those were metal doors in that area. Some of those metal doors, you can literally walk up to and grab, grab bottom and the top to do this, and that shouldn't be happening, that should be a fairly solid door, and that, those doors are failing. You know, so we're not talking, we're not talking adding, adding space to the building, we're not talking, we're, we're just talking.
Maintaining.
Maintaining what we have, you know, and.
And we, we've done a good job of, of keeping track, we've done a good job of dealing with roofing and the energy efficiency monies.
The, the boilers, the, the chillers, we've, we've really, we've really tried to deal with that through energy efficiency. We bang for the buck.
With some good large expenditures that are daycare.
Yep.
And this is, this is, this should be seen as a continuations of, of judicious use of taxpayer money to continue to invest in what we already have, that's, that's a quality physical plant and a quality curriculum.
You know, there are classrooms, we have carpeted, they're delaminating off the floor. Those need to be fixed.
Kids gonna trip and get hurt.
Yeah.
The teachers gonna trip and get hurt.
That, that, you know, some of those repairs are much more costly to you if you don't repair them. So, no, I, and that's why, I don't, I don't really feel like I brought you a list of, for the list things. I was really, I wanted it to be, and, and like I said, I, there's probably items I have not added on that list. And there's certainly maintenance that we do every year, year in, year out. We do try to solve some areas and some issues and problems and fix things, but, you know, we don't build into our budget on an annual basis, it's just not built in. When we had to go through cutting the budget, we just didn't, you know, started putting off a few items here and there. Tried to stretch, stretch the dollars a little further, so.
I think this is, this is in the timeline, judicious, so the meeting would have to be before, when, January?
Uh, I believe it would be, I think our last day to act, and I apologize, I, I sent you, I think I sent you as an attachment, the timeline. It is actually a day, more in the middle of January is the absolute deadline. What we had looked at was the following, a special meeting where this is the only topic, and it's really to hone it in, and then taking action at the regularly scheduled meeting to pass the resolution.
On the ninth.
On the ninth. So, we were looking at, you know, potentially, we were looking at maybe the third or the seventh as one topic board meeting to really hone this in. And again, what I would do is if you, you know, if you said to me, ah, you know, if the majority of you said, we're really not interested in this scenario, but these other two are looking great, we could hone those in even further, and maybe bring you some more expanded detail on those. I just don't wanna, I don't wanna over, part of it is, as Lisa and I look at a dozen or more of these, there's a point where you start looking at them, and they all either look the same, or there's just so much. So we really wanted to hone it in on, on.
I'd like to see more detail of the six hundred dollar five-year non-rate.
Third, third.
That would be my, my first.
With the third? And then we can talk about, I mean, that, that, I did put that in future board meeting. There's an item in there on the agenda where it says, consideration of a special meeting.
Are you thinking in that five thirty timeframe?
Yeah, I guess we can talk about that if you wanted to even go, since it's one topic, if you wanted to go at six o'clock.
For which day, Kerry?
Well, whether it's the third or the seventh, I, I would probably push towards the third.
The third would probably give us just a hair more time to make sure we're agended correctly for the.
Thursday.
That's a Thursday.
Thursday, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but would that meeting be here or?
Or not, or you're on? I would say here.
Here?
Yep.
Yeah, January third's okay for me.
Would you like to look at maybe a six o'clock timeframe versus five thirty? Holiday packages should be.
Six P M?
Six P M.
We, yeah, do, confirm that? I mean, are we putting that as our date right now?
Well, why don't, when we get to that item on the agenda, why don't you set it as our date?
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Okay.
And then, feedback on anything anybody wants to see on that date.
Well, I agree with Leon, that one, six hundred thousand.
Non-recurring six hundred five-year.
Would you, and there too, we could run, we'll run that one, and maybe that's, we'll, off of that one, we could run a couple of different, just, a couple of different numbers in terms of enrollments, and we, I think we already kinda have it run. But we could, we could play that out a little so you could see what would happen if, but.
We roll them up, we roll them down.
Down, you know.
Property values went up, property values went down.
You know, the, the kicker becomes, the predictability of that is, it's a guessing game.
It's a pressure.
Yeah, yeah, we tried to flatten the growth on that so that it was pretty conservative. We figured flat growth was fairly conservative. If we wanna get more conservative, we'd say maybe a slight decline.
Well, I mean, putting all of those, putting all of those numbers into the package and showing those in, in successive spreadsheets or, or diagrams across gives us, gives us a picture of, of what, you know, could happen, because, you know, we're, we're, if we're going to the voters in April and asking for, for this, they're gonna wanna know what the impact is, and the best, it's been our best efforts, the best we can tell them is that we think, based on, on past projections, this is about what it's going to be. But.
All right. Any other discussion after that? So we'll go to the next item, opportunity for individual board member comment. Ben, I'll start on this side.
Um, winter break's coming up, so students and teachers enjoy your winter break, and ready to come back and give it for, I guess what I call the second half of the year. I know the second half of semester's kinda changed, but second half of the school year. And then for people out there that are watching, we had a good conversation tonight on the budget and scenarios. Get out, ask, ask board members, school, school district people, I mean, why we're doing this and what it takes, get involved, and don't start rumors, ask the questions so that the facts can be presented. Especially with tax bills becoming under the next week or two, take a look at what percentage of your taxes go to schools, what it was last year and this year. So before you start, you know, looking at different things, make sure you understand what you've been paying for the last few years, and essentially, we're trying to keep a good school here for the students to learn and for many years to come, upcoming years. I guess that's the, that's the goal why we're all here, is to keep education good in Port Edwards and keep it building. So with that, everybody have a good winter break, and that's all I have.
Two weeks away from Christmas already. Believe that. It's getting bad, it means we're almost the end of the year, another new year. And hopefully, all make it to the end of the year fine. Just wish everybody a, a good holiday season and, hey, try to do something good for somebody.
Hey, that's the both of those. Merry Christmas.
Yeah, I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday season, and I'd also like to just give a shout out to Ed Hoyer for his many years as the PD Director, I know he's still gonna be on the board, but his dedication to the district. I was, he was a principal when I was in school, so it's a long time.
And I, I do the class act all the way around.
Congratulate him on his dedication and commitment. So with that, we will consider an additional January special board meeting. What was the date again?
Thursday the third.
January, Thursday, January third, yep.
Six P M, six P M, right there.
Make a motion that we approve that time and date.
Second.
Got a motion on the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of the board, motion carried. So our next regular meeting would be Wednesday, January ninth. With that, I'll call for adjournment. Second. All the favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.